and Heartland students to talk about issues in the community. And Harriet Steinbach from Illinois State University would like to introduce the group and make a few comments before we start a meeting tonight. So Harriet? Thank you. Call or order a meeting for the Normal Town Council for September 18th, 2023. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Byers?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. We have no public comment about the agenda tonight. Move to the omnibus agenda. Items that will be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. And... Yeah, it's on. There's no... Yeah, there's the light. Ms. Lorenz?
Hi, yes, thank you. I would like to pull item G as in girl and I as in glue or ink.
Two.
Item H?
Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Items considered on the omnibus tonight are approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, council meeting of September 5th, 2023, and a report to receive and file town of normal expenditures for payment as of September 13th, 2023. Resolution allocating $100,000 for local map support of McLean County Regional Planning Commission's Veterans Parkway Corridor Project funded by Rebuilding America Infrastructure with sustainability and equity of those grant funds and authorizing the city manager to execute an associated grant document. A resolution authorizing the execution of a license agreement addendum with Zen City to improve community survey, implement community surveys. I'm not reading well tonight. A resolution authorizing a contract with Air Construction Incorporated for the 2023 Manhole Rehabilitation Contract in the amount of $218,055.80. A resolution waiving the formal bid process and executing a five-year agreement with Block Safety for the purchase of automatic license plate reader data in the amount of $357,500 to be billed $71,500 annually. A resolution accepting bids and authorizing the purchase of one 2023 Ford F-600 one-ton four-by-four truck, and that's from Victory Lane Ford in the amount of $61,938. And a resolution conditionally reapproving the final plat of the third edition to the Trails on Sunset Lake. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Those items are approved. Item G is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Heil Group Incorporated for facilitation services and creation of the Sustainability Plan Vision 2050 and approval of this, of an associated budget agenda.
So moved, please?
Second.
Thank you. So I wanted some clarity first on the sustainability plan and what is it compared and contrasted to the visioning plans that we've been doing every five years? Are they one and the same or are they two different things? I wasn't clear from the report. Well, I want to say that they're, they've generally been separate in terms of the visioning plan, but I don't have great detail. So I guess if it's okay with mayor, I'll ask Ms. Davidson to come forward and talk us through a little bit of the process. Thank you.
Sure. So historically, we've done a vision plan every five years since 1990. The one that we started in 2010 kind of morphed into a discussion that focused on sustainability. So that year, it actually became the vision plan for that year. So then in the subsequent year, like 2015, we did a, you know, more conventional vision plan that didn't have a theme. 2020, of course, COVID, and then we had the kids do the art version. So, so it has been, you know, there has been a time where it's had a focus on sustainability. And in this case, what we are proposing, it would be the same. We would not do a vision 2050 separately from a sustainability plan. It would be essentially a vision plan.
So have we had a standalone sustainability plan or, or did it basically become the 2015?
It's, it basically was the 2010.
Okay. So one of the things I've liked about that process of the visioning plan, I guess I wasn't clear that they had morgue together. You know, the 1991, I think, was inspirational for this building that we're sitting in and the circle that sits outside and a number of the other things that we now call uptown. So we'll, moving forward, including this plan, it wasn't clear to me whether it will have that sort of robust visioning versus focusing on the environmental aspect of sustainability.
Yeah, it's a good question. So it is left up to the group to kind of come up with their own focuses, their own areas of interest within a plan. So over time, you can see every five years, the plans are variable. There are different areas of emphasis. But even in the sustainability plan of 2011, 2010, 2011, it encompassed a pretty broad set of goals that were not specific. It was only, it wasn't only just clean air, clean water. It was many aspects of sustainability. I suspect the same would be true this time, but maybe a little more focused in on some of the environmental topics. It's hard to say.
Can we leave that up to the volunteer group?
I mean, typically, yeah, they are given, you know, kind of totally free rein, but they are asked to generate a vision as a group for the community. So, I mean, they know that the theme, there is kind of a theme this time, but I don't think it will require them to only speak of what you might think of as conventional environmental issues.
So we're telling them that the, the theme is sustainability?
Correct.
And do we, are we saying that that theme is sustainable from an environmental point of view or sustainable from economic and?
Well, we haven't talked, we haven't talked to the group yet, so they haven't been given any specific instructions. But the last time we did this, it was fairly broad. You know, it really gave them the freedom to determine what they believe sustainability to be.
Okay. And then a little more tactical side of things if I can. The process for selecting the Heil Group, they, they do great work, don't get me wrong, but it wasn't clear to me in the report how that came to, to happen. Yeah, sure. We did prepare a request for proposals. We did not send it out to specific firms. We did beyond the Heil Group, to be honest. We shared it with the Heil Group because they had worked with us as a consultant on past plans, including the 2010, the original, what we referenced as the original sustainability plan. And we did post it on our website for those that maintain, they, they continue to view and get information. They get an email notification when our fees and bids are posted. And we did talk about it in the media, but we did not distribute to specific vendors. And then their pricing, how was the $87,000 calculated? This looked like it was broken down into sections. Was that based on hours or did they give us any sense of how that was compiled? I, I believe it was based on their, kind of their assumptions of categories and hours and timeline to, to fill in with the timeline that they proposed in their proposal. So it, it, their expectation of time allocated to each of these areas. And beyond that, one question we had fielded today was, you know, how does the Heil Group proposal compare to other planning services that we've received? I'll just mention to council that the foreign associate plan for the Uptown South Master Plan was about 80, I think it was about 80,000. And that was a nine-month process. This one, we're, we would like to kick off presuming council approval. We would like to kick it off this fall and be done September of '24 is our target, about a year. Um, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
You're sure?
Yes. I, I think just listening to what was just shared, I, I think I need a little clarification, if that's okay. So the 2010 plan was actually the visioning plan. It wasn't. Because I thought I received a copy of the 2010 plan and it didn't mention that it was a, a vision plan. It was mentioned as a sustainability plan. And to me, those are two different things. But, so are we, should this actually say that they're going to help us with our visioning plan, which should have a sustainability focus? Because at first I was assuming that this was more of a sustainability plan, but the way you just explained it, it sounds like it's actually a vision plan that could lead to a sustainability focus, which kind of is, I, I mean, I don't want to get into the nuances of how things were written or anything, but I feel like we may want to in the future, when we talk about this, clarify that language, because that language says a sustainability plan. And to me, that's separate from a visioning plan. So what we're not doing is we're not having a sustainability plan. We're having a visioning plan that possibly could include sustainability, so that people are aware that we're not being sustainably focused necessarily unless.
Let me, let me take that one, because the, the last plan that we did on that was very, very much broad reaching in terms of, you know, there's a definition of sustainability that people describe as environmental, climate change issues and that. The last plan addressed things like economic development, transportation uses, housing, water. It was a very, very broad plan and considered under the concept of sustainability, which all our vision plans did. So I wouldn't get too concerned about the name of the plan or the fact that it might be a narrowly focused plan as a visioning plan. It, my sense is will be very broad-based. Mr. Preston?
I'm sorry, thank you.
So I just, let me build off of this and make sure I understand as well. So a lot of times we will reference our 2040 plan, comprehensive plan and vision 2040, which kind of one, kind of not. Is this a, is this the next version that I want to make sure I understand exactly what we're doing? We love our plans and we use them, so it's good, but we've got a lot of them.
Um, I will jump in and it is not the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan was adopted. It was prepared by Regional Planning Commission. It covers land use and a variety of other topics. It's very comprehensive. That's the name. But, um, so this should not be confused with comprehensive plan. And then in terms of the sustainability plan, we do, we reference it 2050. I guess the confusion comes because the staff keeps calling it sustainability plan. We, at least in our minds, we treat them like they're separate from the vision plan. So the, because we just call it something different and we reference the, the sustainability plan as covering all sorts of things in terms of environmental sustainability, but also financial sustainability for the community in, in very broad brush. So in this particular instance, I apologize for the confusion, but we, we haven't formally adopted anything since 2010 or 11 that we reference directly as a sustainability plan.
But, all right, so then that 2010 sustainability plan was a 25-year outlook that would take us to 2035, correct?
Correct.
Why are we talking about being another one in 2023 then? For a redo of a plan that's supposed to, you know, was originally set out to, why aren't we just building off the 2035 one rather than starting the entire process?
Well, if you recall, we always did the update of those plans every five years. So it's a 25-year outlook and every five years we did a new plan.
And so that's all this is?
Yeah. That would be a... I know.
Focusing more on a sustainability topic, but sustainable, I guess sustainability being a very broad brush. So we reference this as the sustainability topic. Previous vision plans don't, aren't limited to just the topic of sustainability, if that makes sense.
And, and so the other thing on this, Mr. Preston, is these plans require a lot of people and a lot of time. And it was trying to be more efficient of our citizens' use of time by, by combining these efforts to say, you know, this is an outlook. Instead of having two separate plans, uh, uh, Mr. McCarthy is going to verify that. The last sustainability plan in 2010 had almost 280 people participating in it. And the idea of doing that and then doing a separate vision plan, uh, that, that require, that's asking a lot of the volunteer stewardship.
Yes, I agree with you. And I was one of those 280-some back in 13 years ago. But all the more reason why I want to make sure that their charge is clear with what the plan is that they'll be undertaking for us because their time is so valuable and it takes a lot of people with a lot of input to get these things together. I want to make sure that if council has a lot of questions as to what it is, I want to make sure the back gets cleared up here and not for the members that we asked to commit to.
And that's, that's very fair. That's made very clear tonight. And whenever we do these plans, I started off with a charge to that committee and that will be their charge. Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, mayor. I'll start where you left off is, um, back then you addressed the group and, and gave us your broad strokes of, of the charge. But I think it's also important and the, and the need to make sure that there's a, a clear vision of what the task at hand is. What was also valuable about that process is the facilitator at that time asked the group, the key members, there was a core group initially, and then, then they were charged with going out and going forth and deciding what sustainability meant to the citizens. I was a citizen at that time, separate from a councilman. I was not a councilman at that time. And, and we were charged with going out and doing research and bringing back our definitions of sustainability to the group and then through the group process. So it was a very citizen-initiated, citizen-driven definition. And I think that, I hope that that approach persists in this process as well, is that we aren't, that we don't, in the, in the goal, which I think is notable of, of clarity, of, of purpose, that we don't fudge on the side of too narrowly defining the process. For those interested, it, these plans are out there and it's, there's executive summaries and then there's the much, much, much longer version out there as well. Uh, but it's, it, in, in the broadness, I'll build on that comment as well of, of the definition of sustainability. There was three areas in that, that focus areas in that plan. There was certainly the environmental stewardship that we've been talking about today, but there was also economic vitality and social progress. And so there was three big, large, broad strokes there. And again, there wasn't a definition that was left. Citizens decide what was important to the community and their viewpoints at that period of time. And so that panned out into broad strokes, things like government planning and public safety, arts and culture, can, uh, continuous community building and learning, health and wellness, economic development, human services, certainly the, the traditional air, water, land that you would think of. But educational institutions was part of it. Energy in the built environment was part of it. Food systems, transportation and mobility technology were all part of it. So although sustainability was the, the ethos behind it, the idea, but the citizens were the drivers of what topics they wanted to focus on for sustaining here in the town of Normal. So hopefully that clears stuff up, but I, I again, just want to emphasize, I hope that we give the citizens their breath to, to help define what's important to them and, and in our contemporary today, because a lot of things have changed in the 13 years since that plan. A lot happened in our, uh, certainly in our region with the environmental aspects of sustainability. Certainly our, our ag businesses and our insurance businesses are feeling the impact of some of that in their operations. So certainly I hope environment would be addressed by this as well. But again, hopefully, yeah, yeah, ask the, the ag industry and the insurance industry. It's very much an economic development topic that's front and center on everybody's minds right now. So I hope they, they keep it nice and broad. Thanks.
Ms. Lorenz? If I can, just maybe try to put a bow on this, because with my questions followed by the others, then I began to get murkier in my understanding. But is this what I'm voting on? Am I voting tonight on the vision 2050 plan that will have a focus on a widely defined element of sustainability for our community? Am I voting on the vision 2050 plan with that scope?
I would answer in positive on that.
Yes, okay. It's a matter of semantics. I'd rather, I would have rather seen the parentheses or that the, the headline of the title be vision 2050 and the more parenthetical be sustaining, sustainability of our town. And maybe that's just because of the long and successful history of, of the visioning process. But I'm not going to make a motion to change it.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That item is approved. Item H is a resolution of financial commitment and acknowledgement of the town's support for Safe Routes to Schools grant application for improvements at Chidix Junior High School at 300 South Walnut. Ms. Smith?
So moved?
Second.
I, I pulled this item from the omnibus agenda because I went for clarification purpose to emphasize that this really isn't seeking to expand Constitution Trail per se, but to focus on improving trail access to Chidix School, which sits in a residential neighborhood. And for those not aware, Unit 5 does not provide bus service if students live within a mile of, of the school. So in the initial ideas for this, I see that it's cutting through some of the surrounding residential neighborhoods. I had it confirmed that Normal would not be tasked with acquiring right-of-way because we'd be using existing right-of-way. And, and I'm all for improving the ability of students to transport themselves, especially to middle school when they're starting to spread their independence wings. And it's my understanding that this is a beginning step in a grant application process, so it's going to evolve. But I'm very much in favor of this improved access of non-vehicular traffic around this school. Thank you.
Those are on this item. McCarthy?
I just want to take a quick second to, as always, staff going out looking for grant dollars to bring our tax dollars back to the community to do work right here in our community. I always, always appreciate when we're going out and bringing our tax dollars back to do projects. So, thank you. And of course, I greatly appreciate, hopefully, the incentive of keeping our kids active and self-transporting, whether that's walking, jogging, biking, skateboarding, however they're going to use the trail to get safely from their neighborhoods to the schools, I think is a great thing. Thanks.
I don't think we're ready for drone transplant.
Yeah.
But we'll hold that one off. Further on the item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item I is a resolution authorizing changes to the Robert G. Bone Historic Preservation Grant Program. Ms. Lorenz?
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. On this one, the Bone Historic Preservation Program, I was wondering why we're doing this retooling of some of the criteria mid-year and not at budget time?
Sure. That's a great question. What's driving the action at this time is some conversations that staff has had with residents, property owners in historic districts, some applications that we expect to be coming to the Historic Preservation Commission for consideration, and the risk of, to, to those properties of the grants not being sufficient, because then property owners do have the poss, do have the discretion to seek approval to do something different with their property. In, in this particular instance, staff in conversation with the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission believe that the purpose of the Bone Grant Program is to help preserve, to, to continue to value those historic properties and the characteristics of those properties. And we would, we would, it, it would be unfortunate if we just needed to wait six months for a budget process to, to make a change in the program when we know that there are some property owners that could take advantage of this to preserve the character of those historic properties. And is this having a budget impact? Well, we have a very, we have a pretty significant grant pot right now, grant reserve. So immediately, it would not have a significant budget impact. It of course depends on how many grant applications we receive, but we don't anticipate a major impact on the budget due to the current reserved, the preservation fund. Thanks.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That resolution is approved. That concludes our Omnibus Agenda. We have a number of items on general orders tonight, and the first is a presentation by Jamie Wilkie of Partners at Lauterbach Amon PPA Firm on the town's annual financial statements and audit report.
Before I turn over to Jamie for the presentation, I do want to recognize one person and introduce one person. I do want to recognize Felicia Oth in the Finance Department. You know Felicia from previous years. She works in finance and does a great deal of the heavy lifting when it comes to the audit, the financials, the GL, and many processes. Does a wonderful job for us, managing that, those processes and the financials. So I just want to say thank you to her publicly and recognize her. And I do want to introduce one person to you. We have a new person joining the Finance Department as Assistant Finance Director, Latisha Tripak. She's been here only about a month or so, but has provided just great value to us on many projects. And we're very pleased to have her join, join the team. Felicia, right now. So with that, I'll turn over to Ms. Wilkie to do her annual presentation on the town's artificial statements.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me. We do have, I know, lots of pages added to council packet this evening from the audit firm, so I'll apologize in advance for that. My goal this evening will be to provide some of the key highlights of the audit process as well as some of the key sections within the documents. Certainly, I also want to take the opportunity to thank the finance team. This is a six-month process, truly, from start to finish. A lot of coordinated effort back and forth with the team. So, I know several are here this evening, and we certainly want to thank them. It is absolutely a pleasure to work with them. I know our team always gets great support from the town, so we do certainly appreciate that. It certainly makes the audit process much, much easier. So, this evening, I'm going to start conversation on the very large document labeled the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. You've got well over 200 pages. I'm going to try to give you the Cliff Notes version this evening of some of the key results, as well as some of the key sections of the document. So I'll start this evening on page eight of the Bound Report, if you have that in front of you. Page eight provides a copy of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is a program that is administered by the Government Finance Officers Association. This program is really deemed the highest level financial reporting on an annual basis for any local government. There is about an inch and a half thick checklist that we work with the finance team on each year to make sure compliance is being met. And we're happy to report that last year's audit did earn that prestigious award, which is what you'll find on page eight of the document. We will again be submitting this year's audit to the program. We obviously anticipate receipt of the award. We're proud as a firm to have 100% retention rate of that award with our clients. Immediately after the certificate, on pages 11 through 13 of the document, you'll find the Independent Auditor's Report. Current state statute does require that the town undertake an independent audit within six months of the close of the fiscal year. So we are happy to report on time this year, clean audit opinion. That is what we call an unmodified opinion. It is the highest level that we would be able to issue each year. Part of that definition really means that the financial statements as presented are in fact materially correct. You'll see several discussions related to internal controls within the audit opinion itself as well. And while we're not providing a specific opinion on internal controls, we are required each year to do extensive testing on the town's overall control environment. So that does include a detailed review of policies, procedures, segregation of duties, third-party confirmations, actually tracing source transactions through the system. Certainly, if there were any significant issues, deficiencies, we would have to report those this evening, and we're happy to report we've had no such findings. So, in our opinion, the cleanest opinion you can receive each year. Immediately after the audit opinion, you'll find 11 pages labeled Management's Discussion and Analysis, or MDA. As I said, you have well over 200 pages. These 11 pages really serve as the executive summary to the audit document. You're going to see comparable information to the prior fiscal year, discussion of major trends and analysis throughout the year, capital asset investment discussion, long-term debt activity discussion, really a wealth of information kind of condensed within those 11 pages. I always encourage our councils and boards to really read that section in detail. Very high level, I do want to point out, it was positive financial results for the year as a whole. Much of that was revenue-driven, you'll see. Still strong performance from some of the state shared revenues like sales tax, and obviously, we saw the rebounding of the financial market, which you're seeing the impact on investment earnings. So, overall, a positive year for the town as well. We're going to skip the whole middle section. That's really the nitty-gritty detail of the numbers and the disclosures. And I want to take you to page 189, which is what we call our statistical section. I point this section out each year because it also provides a wealth of information related to the town, both financial results over the last 10 fiscal years, as well as non-financial results. So, those of you who aren't accountants or are finance folks, there's really still a wealth of information at the back of the document. Things like tenure history for long-term debt, property taxes, operating indicators, number of full-time employees, for example. So, as you have some time, I always encourage our councils and boards to spend a little time in that section of the document as well. As part of the annual audit, we are required to issue a few other letters related to communication to government, governance. We have issued a management letter this year. Much of it is driven by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASBIE, being very, very active with new pronouncements. We have four new pronouncements coming up in the next two-year cycle with the town, so we will be working with staff on those implementations. We do anticipate likely three of the four probably having some impact. So, certainly, we could go on for days and days about some of those pronouncements. I, I won't bore you this evening with that, but know that we'll continue to have communication back and forth with the staff, make sure they're educated on the impact, and then work side-by-side with them on that implementation as well. And really, that concludes my discussion for this evening, unless there's any specific questions that council may be asked this evening.
Any questions? Ms. Smith?
Hi. I don't know if the city manager shared the email I had sent to her, but I had a few observations based on your statistics, and I was just wondering if you had any feedback based on the other clients that you've worked with. On, on page 203, where it lists the principal property taxpayers, five entities made 2023 the top 10. And, and there's a number that are new. There are only three from the prior 10 years that are new entities. So, have you seen in your experience where communities have such a shifting of players in their economy?
I do. We do have some communities where that's kind of the similar trend we're seeing. I also have communities that that top 10 list is almost identical 10 years ago. So, you know, it really depends on sometimes the mix of industrial, commercial base within the community and how frequently those employers potentially turn over, unfortunately. So, that's kind of a difficult metrics to compare community to community. But we certainly have access to a whole bunch of that information. If you have specific communities that you might have interest in, we can probably pull that together for you.
And, and on page 211, where you had a listing of the principal employers and their ranking and the percentage of total town employment, I was pleased to see that, that we have, again, diversification with a broader number in the current period, contributing more than 3% of, of the workforce, which to me bodes well for normal weathering economic downturns when we have a diversified economy where employment is spread over major employers. And I was wondering if I'm reading that correctly?
You are. And that, you know, when we look at total percentage of overall municipal employment, that is a number that you can see some significant varying from community to community. But I would agree, you've got some diversification there and, and fairly different industries as well, meaning even if one industry were maybe more, you know, had a difficult time in some kind of economic downturn, you've got diversity even in the type of industry as well.
Well, thank you for validating my interpretations. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Good update.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening.
Item eight is a resolution to accept the audited town of Normal financial statements and report on internal controls from the town's auditors, Lauterbach Amon LLP, for the year ended March 31st, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item nine is an ordinance annexing property in the town of Normal, having to do with 9.6 plus or minus acres at the northeast corner of Rab Road and Constitution Trail, referred to as the Archer PUD.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That ordinance is approved. Item 10 is an ordinance rezoning property in the town of Normal at the northeast corner of Rab Road and Constitution Trail. Again, the Archer PUD.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That ordinance is approved. Item 11 is a resolution approving the Archer Preliminary Planned Unit Development at the northeast corner of Rab Road and Constitution Trail.
Move approval.
Second.
Question. Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item 12 is an ordinance rezoning property in the town of Normal at One University Court.
Move approval.
Second.
Question on this item. Ms. Smith and then Mr. Preston.
I had requested the city manager identify how many units might or planned for this location and the size of the lot, because at present, I'm assuming it is single-family residence. Okay. And, and then the rezoning would make possible how many units? I believe it's four units. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Preston? Thanks, Mayor. Since we have some ISU students in the audience tonight who are on the lookout for something the council passes that is relevant to ISU, I just wanted to highlight that our change in zoning that's about to pass will allow a single-family home on the corner of University and Willow, I think.
Yeah.
Yep. To then be rezoned, single-family, to R3A, which will allow for, as Ms. Smith just highlighted, up to four units for student housing to be redeveloped into a new property at that point. Write that down.
There will be text. Please call the roll.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That ordinance is approved. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into contracts for integrated parking management system with Passport and MinuteMan to manage the town's parking garages not to exceed $300,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments on this item?
Mayor, if I could just jump in first. This particular item, also in terms of the studentification, or I'm not sure what the, what the word was, but this, there we go. Thank you. This particular item, council pertains to all three of our Parking Deck in Uptown and changing out our current parking management system with his, which is the gates and the passes that you have to kind of flash before the, the little eye there at the, as you're x-raying the gate. This particular action item we're asking council to approve is changing out our entire deck management system. We, our current system will no longer be supported in 2024. And so if council approves this action tonight, we will immediately move forward with a more technology-driven solution to managing our decks. The Passport solution that's referenced in this report does match the parking management system that Illinois State has implemented on their campus. And then the other portion, the Genetek LPR, will be the license plate reader component, so that when you go in or, you, you enter or exit the decks, it will be by license plate. So, we do have staff available to answer questions if council has questions. The one thing I wanted to point out is, the proposals came in, and as identified, I believe on page, page six of Ms. Kataraji's report, indicates that the proposals came in at $235,000, and we're asking council for authorization to sign contracts up to $300,000. That's a big swing, and we acknowledge that. But as we But as we get into three different decks that function very differently, and it is software-driven and will also require some equipment, license plate, the cameras and the like. We know there are some current unknowns of what we'll discover and what we'll have to adapt to, so that's why we ask council to authorize the city manager to execute contracts up to $300,000 for this initiative.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
That resolution is approved. We have one item of new business, and that's the presentation of the fiscal year 2022-2023 Financial Trend and Condition Report. And I've been given a preview from Mr. Hune, and it will be quite exciting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mr. Hune, thank you for joining us. Council knows that we look forward to this night all year long, honestly. This is a great opportunity for staff to share with council some of our, the trends of the community, some of the financial trends specifically of our organization, which helps us as we move into our budget preparation process. Council knows all too clearly that we're headed in. We're running into our budget preparation process, and we'll meet with you in January to go over our proposed fiscal year 24-25 budget. In the meantime, this is kind of our starting point, sharing with you what our historical trends have looked like and what, how things are looking for the future. It is a great story. I know Mr. Hune is excited to tell the story tonight, so I'll let him get going with his presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. As was mentioned, this is always a good time for us in finance. We're wrapping up, the year is closed, the audit is done. We can kind of put that away and then focus on the current year and the budget planning. This report is part of that wrap-up, where we, as you know, look at a multiple of indicators and give the council a sense, almost like a preamble to the budget of how we landed the year and what we're seeing in the future going forward. Very similar to previous years, there's 35 indicators in the report. We haven't changed that from the past year. Occasionally, we do increase or decrease depending on the evolution of certain things, but we rate every indicator as positive, negative, or unclassified depending on the indicator itself. We go through a number of indicators. This is all familiar to you in terms of previous years. We look at community indicators, revenue, expense, debt service, balance sheet indicators, and of course, our financial strategies that are part of our budget process. So in terms of year-to-year, kind of a spoiler alert, this was a really great report. Last year, it was a good report, and it's much better this year, so we're pleased to say that. Last year's report, we had 24 positive, three negative, eight unclassified for a total of 35. This year, we swung two more into positive with only one negative, and we'll kind of go through a number of those. I won't touch on all of them, of course, but we'll touch on a few of the more significant ones. And of course, we can go back in the report and look at anyone that you'd like us to look at in more detail. In terms of community indicators, these are the ones that we focus on. Assess value and construction permits and so forth. I'll go through a number of these, all positive except for construction permits. And that was kind of to be expected. We're starting to see a bit of a slowdown in the economy, and that's kind of a first indicator of where things are slowing down, and we're seeing that as, in terms of report. Of course, the first one I look at today or this evening is assessed value. This one is, we've got a little bit of a story to tell here that is interesting and also very positive. Typically, this is not a super-growth area. You know, we like to see a percentage growth each year in the tax base. We have started to see some growth in the last couple of years. You know, typically, for the last 10 years prior to last year, it's about 1% on annual growth. This last year, 21 was 2.5, and this year was 7.2. Now, the 7.2 is largely, as you know, upward pressure on housing. We're starting to see more of a demand for housing, and when supply is low and demand is high, prices increase. You know, it's pretty straightforward economics. What's unique this year is, and we do look at sometimes what's happening in the next cycle. 22 had a 7.2% increase, which was sizable compared to the past, very significant in terms of increases. I know you've all received your notifications in the mail and probably see that happening again. We are talking to the treasurer of the county right now. We don't spend a lot of time looking at the out-year. We're going to be looking at 23 assessed value as part of the projections for tax of the next couple of months. So we need to kind of guess or estimate what that might be as part of that levy process. So we're in early communication with the county assessor right now what that might look like. And if you think 7.2 is big, what we're seeing now is 21.1% growth in assessed value, which is frankly remarkable, honestly. We, you know, the town in finance and city manager's office, we spent a great deal of time tracking previous numbers and current year activity and projections for the out-year with the five-year budget. And it's rare that I'll plug something into a spreadsheet and one of our models and have the result surprise me. But this was surprising, and it's been a long time since I've been surprised by such a number. So what's happening here, well, again, we're seeing continued upward pressure on housing prices, largely driven by housing. Also, we're seeing some growth in commercial value and also seeing growth in industrial value. The industrial value, it's not hard to guess where that's coming from. We have an automaker here that's starting, had its really first active year of a more true assessment through the assessor's office, and they continue to still grow. So we are experiencing essentially two things. One, significant growth in that sector and continued upward pressure on housing prices that drove 21%. Now, that's the preliminary. It's not done yet. That will probably fade back a bit between now and the final number as people get to contest their assessments and so forth. But you can't let that go. It's just amazing, the growth that's occurring here as a tax base in Normal. And then this slide here is that we show every year we track the average home prices. Again, no surprise there. We're seeing a second year of growth. Growth last year was significant for both new and existing houses, and it continues to be going up in year two. You can see 14.1 prices for this last year from 21 to 22 and 12.4 for existing. So again, you're seeing right there the reality of that upward pressure on the housing market in terms of prices. Amtrak and Airport, both also very strong. Both up significant. Amtrak had the biggest increase. Airport usage, you know, the second year of an increase since the downturn in COVID, which was certainly expected, and we're seeing more and more travel there. A nice big increase in 21, a significant increase in 22. So that seems to be on a positive trend again. What was happening in Amtrak was they acted a couple of years of losses. What we were hearing kind of nationally across the state is people weren't quite getting back on trains and buses per se, but they were flying a lot more. Now that's reversed, where there's a comfort level, you know, of the travel via the rail, and we're seeing a significant increase, 73.23% over last year, which is very large. Not quite back to pre-COVID levels, of course, for both Airport or Amtrak, but significant increases and certainly in the right direction. Unemployment, again, you know, you can see for yourself, the numbers are very low. 2.9 is probably one of the lowest we've ever had for the town, 4.3 for the state. In terms of our counterparts that we look at, all had decreases. Of course, Urbana kind of stayed flat. All have had significant decreases in their unemployment rate, which is good. I think through August numbers, the town is 3.9% unemployment. The state's at 5.3, and US is at 3.9. So we're seeing some bump-ups there a little bit, although those levels are still, are quite strong. But we are starting to see a little bit of a bump-up unemployment, which is to be expected as the economy starts to slow down, and that's obviously being pushed heavily by the Fed in terms of their rate hikes and so forth. Workforce, again, two years of increases. This is a number that had been dropping for a number of years, you can see from the chart. Then, of course, we have a new workforce in town and obviously with Rivian, but other parts of the community are also growing, businesses with unemployment. So that's all helping this workforce number grow up in 21 from 20, and then again in 22. So we're seeing good growth there, and that's wonderful to see in terms of the workforce. It brings more people, more revenue, not without its issues in terms of housing development and so forth. But certainly, you want to see a growing workforce, and we're very pleased to see that happening. The only negative in this report, of course, and it was to be expected, was construction permits. We are down overall from 21, almost 10%. However, I do want to note a couple of things. One, our single-family houses are up from last year. Remodels were a bit down. I think kind of what's really essentially happened there is obviously a demand for housing has occurred. That has slowed significantly because of interest rates, and that will eventually reverse once that comes down. We saw a decrease in remodeling, because I think we had a big surge of remodeling during the COVID period, and people were struggling for homes, but not necessarily remodeling now. So we watched it pretty closely. We expect it to be down. It is down. Hasn't really recovered much in the current year-to-date period. Housing is a little bit down. Remodels are about flat at this time last year. So we'll continue to watch it, but it's kind of expected, given an early indicator, not really an early indicator, but one that reacts quickly to essentially downturns in the economy. Moving on to revenue, all positive picture there. We'll touch on several of these. That's just the revenue chart to kind of show some of the diversity in terms of our revenues per townwide. Property tax distribution, this is a chart that just demonstrates the overall tax rate of all the jurisdictions that have tax authority to a normal resident. You can see there the lion's share, as usual, is Unit 5 with over 61% of the actual tax rate. The town's at 10.7, which is actually a decrease from previous years. That's good to see for several reasons. You can see back in 2013, we were at 217, so now, I'm sorry, at 10.7, and now we're at 10.7 in Gabor 22. So going, I think, in a stable direction. We like to see that rates stay stable, and obviously, Unit 5, that's where they put most of their money. Of course, McLean County at 10.1%, Community College at 6.5% and so forth. So that's, we have that ranked as positive, because we're kind of staying within that 10% to 12% range that we like to stay in terms of our revenue modeling. The direct tax rate, this report shows the direct tax rate for all those jurisdictions, all those municipalities, from, you know, kind of first to last or lowest to highest. The different color there represents some of those jurisdictions, like Peoria, Champaign, Springfield, Urbana, and Decatur have a park district. Galesburg and Normal and Bloomington have a park district from our other revenue sources. So you can see here that the town has maintained the lowest tax rate in terms of the direct tax rate that all of our comparables, and that certainly is driving some of that 10.7% in terms of the previous slide. If you look at the tax rate, you know, community-wide, this is the entire taxes that a resident would feel, given the different layers of governments on top of that area, the town library, the county, the township, the school district and so forth. You can see we're kind of in third place, you know, essentially. Bloomington is the lowest and Springfield, then Normal and so forth. But again, a good place to be in kind of that top two, three or four folks there in terms of the rate for the taxpayer. Sales tax, this is where we report the activity for the 1% state shared sales tax and the 2.5% local sales tax. Very strong fiscal year-end, 26.5% growth in the state shared sales tax. That's, again, is just frankly shocking, you know. Not, I mean, it's a shocking number, but we're seeing such economic growth in terms of the workforce and spending and consumption here, that's good to see, and we're excited to see it. 5.5 for local sales tax, very good growth numbers. Current year-to-date through August, the state share tax is at 16% over last year, so we're still seeing significant growth in that revenue. That will probably moderate down as the rest of the fiscal year proceeds. And then for year-to-date, for sales, our local sales tax is 5% up. So both are still up significantly over last year, and last year's numbers were pretty significantly up. But we will watch that going forward. We had budgeted for a 2% growth in both those areas. So again, we remain pretty conservative all the time with that, so we will have some benefit we'll see in that budget, in this budget for that year, given the actuals are coming in so high. Not all a great story, certainly for a year, and it is. State income tax up 12.5%. Again, that off of a 25% increase from the previous year. You know, a lot of wage growth across the board in Illinois and frankly in the US has driven a lot of income taxes to go up through August of the current year. State income tax is actually down for us by 9%. So again, we're starting to feel some of that drag on the economy, so to speak, in terms of that. We're starting to, this revenue will react to that also over time. So I think most of the 9% down from the gains we've had for this last fiscal year, we'll watch it closely, but we are down in that income. And I kind of expected it to happen, given the pending recession and the slowdown of the economy. So we'll see as that progresses for the fiscal year. But again, several years of growth, and that's just not sustainable, you know, particularly in this market right now for the pending recession and so forth. But a good, strong year, several fiscal years of increases. We're going to certainly see a bit of a downturn now, I think, though. Utility tax, another kind of great story. This is a revenue source that I sat here for many, many years and say, well, it's just going down, and it continues to go down, and it's troubling, and we're trying to address it. What's been addressed is I think we're just seeing a lot more consumption through a lot more people living here and working here and playing here, so we're seeing that return. It's kind of flat for year-to-date in terms of those numbers, but to see two years of growth in that tax rate is welcoming for sure, and we'll continue to monitor going forward. Food and beverage, again, this one has always been a good revenue source for the town. It's always grown, and the only time it didn't grow was essentially COVID. In 2020, we had a 2.11% drop. We had just caught the tail end, or COVID was just happening in the tail end of our last fiscal, of that fiscal year for March. So we had kind of a bad March, and that brought us below for the 2020 number. 2021, it was pretty obvious there was a great deal of shutdown and so forth in the business. Certainly, it's returned in '22 and still strong again in '23. And honestly, through current year-to-date, July, we're up 14% year-over-year. So that's a strong revenue source, evidenced by all the activity in restaurants that are in the community and the participation in them. Moving on to expenses. This shows again the chart of the overall mix. In terms of changes, the public safety increased quite a bit over the previous year. This other chart here kind of demonstrates that, too. This is the overall spending in general fund. I do want to point out a couple of things, though, with this. It wasn't necessarily operational increases that caused that spike up in that line. If you recall, in 2023, we contributed $6 million more to the pension funds. That's going to hit that blue bar from 28.4 to 3, 6.7%. That's primarily that. There is some operational and public safety where we were kind of fully staffed in PV that opposed to the previous year, so we're seeing that. We also did some one-time stuff in terms of transfers to roadway, transfers to CIP last year that were kind of one-time transfers to fund capital. That beefed up that expense a bit or that cash outlay as a transfer out. We did have some deck repairs. We did some equipment purchases and so forth. So I expect that'll come down a bit in this next round, this time next year, because most of that bump-up was related to kind of one-time financing for, as I said, pensions and capital. Debt, another great story, probably one of the better stories out of already good story here. This chart overlapping debt as a percent of assessed value. So overlapping debt, when we say that, what we mean is everybody's debt that has a taxing jurisdiction here in the community, Heartland, Unit 5, ourselves, the county and so forth. So assessed values are growing, debt is dropping off, and that's a good indicator to see. It speaks to a certain amount of wealth in the community to say that assessed value is higher than debt and so forth. In terms of the town alone, also a big drop in debt, $11.5 million decrease. This was a decrease that I know you're all familiar with. We had an $11.5 million debt drop off, 8.2. That was the early payoff of our 2012 bond issue. And now, of course, we always have some principal payout in addition to that that was going on. So again, we're seeing a downward sloping debt. In '22, there was a bit of a bump-up, and that was to do with the fire station debt, the 2.5 and so forth. But now we're dropping down again in terms... the 2.5 and so forth, but now we're dropping down again in terms of our overall debt position. Long-term debt compared to our assessed value, kind of a similar report to the previous slide, two slides ago, it says our assessed value in our debt. Again, we're seeing our assessed value grow, we're seeing our debt drop off, so in essence, we're creating a little more of a divergence in terms of assessed value, the overall property assets of the community versus its debt. So it's a good, that kind of work gets way down, obviously a positive, a positive direction. And then finally, just bond principal payments, this, I guess this is kind of one more celebration of the payoff of the debt, but we, you know, we typically pay anywhere between $5 and $6 million of bond and principal and interest during annually. The big jump there in 2023, the $14.1 million is, is that 4 to 6 million dollar bond payment plus the 8.2 for the debt payoff for 2012. So you won't say that again next year, per se, it'll go down to our weather standard Terms of balance sheet stuff, again, all very positive. General fund, fund balance, we saw growth again this year in balance, that that's a good position to be in, about $3.7 million more in funding or in reserve. Pension funds, both, both in good condition. Police, second year of increases, which is nice to see. This, this was a, I wouldn't say unexpected. I was, I was a little concerned because I know we have a pretty rough market in '22, '23. However, the council knows we only kind of recognize a portion of that loss to smooth the, the values. So we, we did see a bump up in assess, I'm sorry, in pension funding level. A lot of that has to do with the council's approval of contributing more money to the pension funds and that's the impact of that. So two years of a growth is, is great to see and will, and will continue to support moving that forward even further. Same with, with fire, they both experienced an uptick, 56 to 60%. Again, there were some losses in terms of the market, which we are expecting that now there'll be a recovery, but a lot of that growth is the contribution that the town, the council authorized. So we're moving in a good direction there with pension funding, which is really good to see. There's been several years of, of struggle there and we're starting to see some, some return now to a positive direction. IMRF, this one, this one, you know, we don't, we don't control this one in terms of actual assumptions and analysis. This is completely entirely controlled by IMRF. They just essentially say, this is your, this is your funding level, this is your rate to pay us annually for IMRF contribution and we make that payment. We have enjoyed over the last few years, growth in, in that funding level, 106% in '21, which is great. And that also created a lot less of a contribution from the town to IMRF to fund. We, we did see a drop this year and that's all market-driven in terms of IMRF is experiencing market losses like any pension fund. Not overly worried about that, you know, it's still incredibly well-funded and it can bounce back very quickly, as we've seen in the past years where, when the economy returns, the market returns, we see a big bump there. We will probably feel a little more of a rate increase for next budget years to kind of make up for that difference, but when you're kind of pushing along 100%, that's where you want to be for sure. So it shouldn't be too troubling to the budget process this year. Water fund in good condition, good revenue picture this year. Cash very stable with last year, so no, no over concern, no, no concerns with operations there. Sewer, same situation, good revenue, strong cash position, so in a good place there. Health and dental fund, this one, as you know, is sometimes been kind of a problem child fund in a way. Struggled for many years. '21 was a very difficult year in terms of claim costs, boutique drug costs, and we analyze this all the time. '22, I can't say that was a recovery year, it looks like a big increase, but actually that was the year that we had to put a subsidy transfer from the general fund to keep the fund solvent. However, '22, '23, it was on its own. We didn't give any money and it recovered even further. So we're seeing a good direction there. We'll continue to monitor it. It is susceptible to significant swings depending on our employee base and any medical conditions that people are dealing with. But for now, I'm feeling much better about the fund. It's, it's kind of on its own, it's off life support, let's be, and we will continue to watch it going forward, but it's in the right direction and it's good to see a surplus start to grow there in that fund. Financial strategies, these are, of course, are the strategies that we use that guide a lot of our budget process. I'm not going to go into a great detail on these. All, all looking very positive. Just a couple of comments to share on each, I'll make it, I'll make it quick. General fund, we do have some excess reserves that we can, that we can manage going forward in the budget year, this year, so given the, the revenue strength of this last fiscal year close. We are funding contingency funding, which is great. We had some budget, we had some money in the budget for that last year and we see that continuing. Vehicle reserve is in a good position, although there's quite a bit coming up the next five years to spend down, but it's going into a pretty strong, strong area. Our debt ratios are looking good. If you look at the report real closely, you might notice the debt ratio is kind of dropping a bit in a couple of different fiscal years. That's by design. If the council recalls, we have a fairly long debt restructure program to deal with the loss of the TIF money in '27, '28. There's been a number of actions that we planned between now, actually a number of years ago, to '27, '28. We've done about half of them so far and they've been, they've gone as planned. We, we did have some actions in that plan that would require, that, that we're going to anticipate some refundings, that those aren't happening right now because the market just isn't favorable to refund. And we're not, we're not in bad shape in terms of rates. And actually, the actions that we're going to, we were going to take as part of the structure plan that related to refundings weren't really solving the problem. It was kind of just gravy on top to make it easier, but there was, that wasn't part of the major solution. More, more of that was early debt payoff and so forth. And we still have several more years that occur. So if you do see that number, if you looked at it, it looks a little, where we dip down below our target, that's by design to pull on, pull down the reserves to make some principal payments ahead of time to, to, to give us some capacity in the out years. That's a lot to throw at you, but in the end, we still have as a positive outlook in terms of the debt ratios. We look at them very closely. Health insurance reserve, that, that's looking good. We're, we hope if we continue on the path that we're seeing right now, over the next, over the next few budget cycles, we should see getting back to our target. We're not below our target significantly. The fund has cat money in it and I would say it's in a good position. We're still below our target a little bit, but we're moving in the right direction. Water and sewer funds, both from a capital perspective and operating perspective are, are in good shape. We had to get through a budget cycle and reprioritize capital and look at operations, but we're going into that cycle in a pretty good position for, for all funds, particularly the enterprise funds. So just a final wrap-up on budget status and update. As kind of a reminder, you know, two years ago, 2021, '22, that was a strong revenue year, kind of a recovery year from COVID, where we had a significant surplus and allowed us to do a lot of good funding in terms of one-time stuff for pensions, for capital, for roadwork and that, and that, and it helped a lot with some of the expenses we were incurring also in terms of inflationary. The current year, the year we just closed, I would call it more of an economic-driven revenue than more recovery. We're seeing such economic engine going on here in the community, we're seeing that in the workforce and the sales tax and so forth. So this year was more, more, not less recovery from COVID, more economic growth, you know, facilitated. Again, strong revenue year, we're going to have, we are going to have surplus and some excess reserves that will give us an ability to, to have, go into the budget cycle in pretty good shape. Not quite as much as it was the previous year in '22, of course, but again, still a positive position and we'll have some decisions to make as a council on, on how to utilize those, those funds. Current fiscal year, it's, it's looking fine. Revenue is largely favorable, in some cases very favorable, except for, of course, income tax, which is down. We kind of expected that, given the, the environment and the economy. Expenses are tracking at or below budget, so no concern there in terms of where, where our expenses are at. So we're fiscally in a pretty good position this fiscal year, very good, honestly, it's, but it's still pretty early, but we will have some flexibility for some one-time contribution. Again, we're going into the budget cycle '24, '25. We're just in that, in that cycle now, in a good position. You know, a little bit of uncertainty in the future, so I'll, I'm going to put myself on the chopping block here and say it's a, we're, we're in strong financial condition now, but the out years always worry me. And I, I always say that and you probably will stop believing me someday, but, but I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a mantra or a modeling that we do that ensures that we always stay in good financial condition to always be worried about the out years, but it is, it can be somewhat funny sometimes. So that, that's all I have for you. I'm happy to go back through anything else or address any questions you might have on other slides we didn't cover. But again, great, great report, feeling very good about where we stand for, for year-end and going into the budget cycle that we're all in right now, so.
I would say, Mr. Henn, if you said, "We would worry about the out years" if you didn't worry about the out years. It's great news for the community. There's a lot of, a lot of positive in the community and in the state of Illinois and reflected in this. And as always, this is such an incredibly concise look at the overall condition of our community. It's fantastic work, you and your staff, highly committed for the work you do, especially when you bring such good news.
Yep, it's always fun. We have brought bad news into the task. We're not afraid of reporting bad news, but it is what it is and the numbers are looking very strong.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I turn to some questions on revenue, in the audit report, the management discussion and analysis mentioned there were cost savings of $2.9 million last year. And when I asked the city manager for where those were concentrated, the response was a lot of it was salaries and benefits, professional services and some equipment. And I know you rightfully budget for full staffing, but we haven't already achieved, always achieved that. So how is the staffing level looking for the current year? Are we filling the positions that have been budgeted in the various departments?
Well, I will put a pitch in for the Open Data Portal, which you can check at any time or any, anybody in the world, I suppose, could take a look at any time to find out how we're doing in terms of our personnel expenses compared to budget. And that gives you an indicator of how we're doing. We still have some vacant positions because of retirements and the like and it takes time to recruit, but we're doing, we're doing pretty well in getting our positions filled.
And, and then with the EAV analysis that you provided and the significant increase over the most recent two years, are there any entities that have entered the tax base because subsidies or other commitments had expired that had removed them from EAV? I'm thinking specifically of Rivian.
Well, yeah, Rivian had their abatement, their last abatement was last fiscal year, so they're, they're no longer getting abatement from the town or other jurisdictions and they, of course, had a sizable increase in their EAB also, so.
So that's, that's the more significant ones that might have been added in the current year that wasn't there in prior years?
Yes, well, in current, in current year '22, their, that abatement was still there. In '23, it's not, so.
Okay.
So we haven't seen that, necessarily that, that, that abatement fall off in the numbers here, but it, but it is gone.
And your graph of the growth in sales tax revenue, do you have a percentage of how much, as a percentage of total revenue, sales tax has improved over the last 10 years? I think you mentioned to me when I was talking to you previously that it's now about 40%?
Right, there is, there is a chart there that talks about the sales tax revenue compared to general fund revenue and, and I think we were somewhere around 30, low 30, maybe 31, 32% 10 years ago and now we're at 40. So we're seeing that revenue source grow and that, that's a typical revenue source for municipalities to fund their operations from. So it's good to see a primary source of our funding continue to grow as it is.
But that is something that makes an accountant want to scale back their projections for future years because that is more sensitive to shifts in consumer confidence and spending levels in a downturn, correct?
That's 100% true and, and you know, you know us too well, we, we never get too optimistic about future revenue growth. We like to just go in and put something in relatively small and just be surprised in terms of, to help us with, with revenue.
So it's nice to see the impact of the front-end loading of the pension payments that we've done in, in the recent period, but I guess we'll have to wait for the budget work session to see what, how much that will impact our commitments over the next five years since we develop our budgets on a five-year cycle. Do you have any sense of, of how well that has helped us to, to do that early payment of supplemental additional pension dollars?
Sure. I don't have necessarily quantitative information to share with my fingertips right now, but you're 100% correct. We, it is a benefit. I think what we proposed during the, the $6 million contribution, we had done analysis that's, that supported if we could make that contribution by 2040, we'd save roughly $24 million of contribution between now and 2040. We'll rework that analysis. We're still on a path to 100% funding by 2040, so the contribution we made will have some impact on that, but we're still going to go towards that goal and the extra analysis will help us get there. Given that the funding level is higher, it helps the contribution not grow as fast, but it will be growing every single year until we get 2040 because we are at a relatively low funding level, but we have, we have made improvements there. But yeah, it did benefit us and it will benefit us going forward to continue to put money in now in the long term.
And I'll, I'll jump in, Ms. Smith. The, you won't, you'll know before January where we're at with our planned funding level for police and fire pensions and even Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. We come to council in November to discuss the property tax levy and the levy is what we use to fund our retirement expenses and then we supplement with general fund revenues on top of that. So we'll, we'll be talking about this, you know, within a couple of months.
And Normal is shooting for 100% funding by 2040, but isn't the state only requiring 90%?
Correct.
By that period, okay. Great to hear we're ahead of them.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to commend Andrew and your staff for this. I always enjoy, I don't know, find insightful, I guess, this report each year and I think the way that it is laid out, not only for us up here, but for the public who cares to follow along, is incredibly beneficial, transparent and tells a, tells a great story, not only about the town internally, but about our community. Couple questions for you. First one on property tax, the comparables for municipal property tax rate, I think page 16 on the first slide, page 16. Can you remind me how many of those comps that are listed there have separate library districts or a library?
Oh, um, we do, we do exclude that to, to pull it out. I, I can't answer that question. I know Bloomington has one for sure. Of course we do. I, I think a number of them do have a library that they fund via property tax that we pull out, but I have to get that back to you after me.
Okay, but for those, for those municipalities that just incorporate library entirely within the municipal operations rather than separate, that is, that portion of the takeout, like, it's apples to apples.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Could we, there are some that incorporate it as part of their library rate in their general fund and we just pulled that out just to give an apples-to-apples comparison.
Yep. And then thinking of comps, my other question relates to page 32 and 33, just talked about the pension funds, public safety. Have you guys been following comparable communities, whether the same ones as a property tax or others, to see how we stacked up across downstate municipalities for funding levels? I know that's been a hot topic, I've had a difficult grasp for a lot of municipalities for a lot of years now, so.
Right. We, we used to officially report that initial report for a number of years to show our counterparts and where they're at. We stopped doing it because they were using a variety of assumptions that weren't an apples-to-apples comparison. But last one I looked at was just recently, a lot of my colleagues will, will share where we're at and we try to compile the information informally among ourselves. In terms of where the town stands against them, we're kind of in the same pack with a lot of them. Some are higher, some are lower, some are with us. So I, I wouldn't necessarily say we're, we're, we're on average with, with many of them. We, like I said, we didn't officially report anymore because there's just too many unique things going on with the assessed values and with their, their assumptions that they use that can, can artificially make them look better or worse depending on how they, they do those assumptions. But again, I would say on, on, on average, we're, we're within a very similar with the rest of them.
Okay. And within those communities that we've talked with and looked at, maybe anecdotal, but is it still prevailing, most common or best practice to primarily fund pensions from property tax levies? Don't you continue to see?
Yes, yeah, that's pretty common across most of our industry. They use that source. It's a, it's a, it's a stable source for a, a stable need and stable liability, so that usually is the connection there. You can use other things if you wanted to in the town. As Miss Reese mentioned, we have supplemented that with other revenue sources, and we will continue to probably do that, but primarily it's property tax driven.
Go back to where I started so that point doesn't get lost. This is great.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hearn, thank you, as always. It's always good to get this information before we head into budget and helps us see the impact of our decisions up here and what's going on. And I'll echo that when you hear Mr. Hearn up here talk about worrying about the out years, you know it's going to be a good performance here next year. At least that's been my decade-long experience. But a great report with great information. I'm going to, I have a few questions. I'm going to kind of bring it back up a level of, of high-level distraction for a minute. So as you kind of big-bucketed us with revenues and expenses and kind of performances, as we were looking forward, are you anticipating large deltas in any of the revenue streams or expense streams, large changes from what we're experiencing in the last, the recovery psychological, call it, from, from COVID?
Sure. I think we'll see things return to a little more of a normal, regular increase in terms of revenue and expense. We've seen some significant growth in revenue and income tax. The ancillary revenues like food and beverage, hotel, motel, those are growing, and I think we'll see everything kind of move to a more, more sustainable, regular.
A flattening.
Yeah, a flattening. We might.
Maybe not necessarily flat, but we tend to have basic assumptions, like generally we anticipate a 1.5% to 2% growth rate.
Right.
Or a 3% to 4% growth rate in sales tax based on kind of a longer historical trend. So we could go back to those kind of more.
Less than 25%.
Yeah, more level assumptions.
Right, and the expense side, I assume.
That, that is always consistent year to year with our budget. We keep that pretty, we keep that under the revenue projections, and then that typically just gives us more, more surplus in the end. And again, the council is very familiar with this process. If we start to see some significant deltas in revenue, we can react expenses very quickly on dealing with those issues. But I think we'll, again, we'll, we'll see, once this growth, that we'll see, we'll start to see more of a regular growth year to year. It might, it might take a couple of years to get there. You know, '24 is going to be a unique year because there's a recession, but kind of soft landing maybe at the end of the calendar year, and how long will it be? No one really knows. That'll have some, that'll have some impact, but once that, once we're free of that, and it will be significant from what I'm reading and hearing, we'll get back to a more regular growth.
And to be clear to everybody listening, I'm not concerned about them. It's always good to hear the projections of what our finance department is seeing in the future, and I know we are conservative in our indexing of expenses to our projected, conservative projections of revenues as well, so I'm never concerned that we're going to overspend. Moving along to debt for a second, and the, the new, I'll call it new debt management or the revised debt restructuring approach. You hinted a little bit about some potential changes based on the interest rate environment and the cost of money. And there's a positive side of the cost of money, and there's a negative side of the cost of money, and I'm sure there's both impacts to us. Do you foresee other than maybe some delayed and delays in early payoffs or forecasted payoffs to the change in our, our debt program, our debt, retirement program?
A lot of the payoffs that we're going to be doing, I haven't got that, that handy, are going to recur in later years where we're taking off some principal payments, because not to get too far down the rabbit hole on that, that debt restructure, so you want to kind of keep it a high level, but.
Yes.
In the years that we are losing that revenue, we kind of picked off principal payments to pay off in those years to eliminate that out, that outgrowth. So I'm not worried about it in terms of where we stand with that program. It's, it's running well, it's working well. I'm not sure if I answered your question there.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I was just going to jump in. We, we look at this at least quarterly to figure out what options could be, if there's something that we should take advantage of sooner rather than later. And so it, in terms of down the road, will it make sense to refinance our bonds or pay something off early? We'll assess that at the time, but we're looking at it regularly in case an opportunity arises to refinance at a lower rate or hold it or, you know, pay it off in total. So we're, we're keeping an eye on all that.
Excellent. I'm sure I was on very clear in my question, Mr. Hearn, but, but yeah, I know that institutions are, and a lot of us individuals are looking at whether or not our, our 1.99 car loan, we should be paying off right now when we're getting 5% guaranteed in the market or pay the bare minimum. And so I know that we've, we've got to be looking at those kind of decisions here at the municipal level, too. So thank you very much again. Great work, great report. Really appreciate all the work you guys are doing for us. Thank you.
Ms. Loren?
Thank you. So I'll pick up where Mr. McCarthy left off. Thanks for teeing that up. I guess I would just like to maybe put a request in that, and you may be planning this anyway, but maybe at an upcoming council manager update that we, we do a little deeper dive into what you're seeing from your quarterly checks on the debt restructure plan, just because I remember it was about fall this time of year, a couple of years ago, when we first put it into motion. A lot has changed in the market since then, particularly with interest rates, and so just a little bit of a deeper dive, not to get into it here, but, you know, and some of the budget preparation stuff that we do.
Sure, absolutely. We can plan to provide, or I can provide counsel with information on where we are with our debt restructure plan in more detail, in terms of the things that we're looking at quarterly, is regular conversations with our financial advisor, Mesero Financial, and what the market is at the time and what the market is anticipated to go to, and whether or not there are options at that time for refinancing.
Right, okay. So that's one area of concern, I guess, not to overstated, but just to keep an eye on it. The other one is back on the number of construction building permits. I have heard in it totally that for the county, that's way down this year to date, having to do with some of the, back to the financial markets, you know, being tough for some of the developers to get their business performance to stand up once it comes time to borrow money. So I just, I just want to kind of put that out there, that that's, that's another area of concern that I, I sense. And I don't know if you've got, did you say what those current numbers are for this year?
Through August, housing permits are remain down, incomparably, every models are about the same.
Okay, so housing permits are down. Yeah, that's kind of what I've heard.
I believe that information also can be found on the Open Data Portal where we track permits.
Okay.
Looking for, I'll take a look there. Sue, oh, Sue gave me the thumbs up, so yes, that information, perfect.
And then the only other question I had, just because I remember it from a few years back, I think it was on the state income tax revenue, are they still taking a swipe at it, a couple of percentages?
They are, yeah. They, they have restored it to its, its former glory, you know, before they started kind of playing with that formula. They have made some, some increases, or they have taken away some of that, that withdrawal.
Okay.
I haven't got the detailed information on that, but I know things have improved in terms of that, but they're still not quite at where we were before they started taking that, that cut, so to speak.
Yeah, the tax on the tax. Do you see it either staying the same or maybe getting better, or do you, you know, what are you seeing on that?
I'm not sure where that's going to go. I, I don't see it getting worse, because there's been a lot of pushback. And I know IML is deeply involved in lobbying for the, for the municipalities.
Restoration of it, yeah.
But I don't have current information, other than it hasn't gotten worse.
Okay, good to know. All righty, that's all I had.
There was a very, very slight increase in the LGDF in the last session, but it was minuscule, if you will.
Yeah, they, they said it would increase, and it was like, okay, yeah, it's not a huge increase, but they, it's right direction.
All right, there you go. Something's better than nothing.
Right.
It's interesting at a session. The IML had LGDF letters about eight feet tall, and after the reports came from the legislature, they said, "Well, next year, we're going to set them on fire, see if we can get more attention on them." So it's, it's a primary issue. Further on this? Is there a motion to receive and file on this or not? Nope, not on this one. Okay. So we have, that concludes general orders and new business. We have one public commenter tonight, and that would be Mr. Almer. Mr. Almer, if you can come forward.
Thank you. I changed much of what I was going to say based on the discussions here. I found one comment by Andrew interesting in that, you know, it's great that the utility tax is going up. Doesn't that mean people are consuming more electricity and natural gas, which is bad? Just a thought. Actually, a large part of that tax is on the, the large part of your bill, except for during extremely hot or cold conditions, is fixed, and it is a terribly regressive tax on the court. It's one of the most regressive taxes that we have, and I've know of other communities in central Illinois that have no utility tax. Just something to think about. Okay, a lot of talk about sustainability and all the things the government can do. I would just wonder, I'm not going to ask any of you to respond, but what do you do to increase sustainability as individuals? Because it seems like you want to run our lives. Well, for example, Illinois Power calls a red power alert when it's exceedingly hot, usually the hours at 2:00 to 6:00. Now, if you reduce your consumption during this period, you get a benefit. So what do I do? Actually, before 2:00, I lower the thermostat a couple of degrees, and after 6:00, I raise it about four degrees, so it's back a couple, I raise it back a couple of degrees, and I turn off my hot tub so it can't come on, I turn off the dehumidifier in the basement, and I reduced my consumption during this on-peak period of four hours from a normally, it said, at the outside temperature and all, I would have consumed 10 kilowatt-hours. I consumed 1.6. During peak times is when they run the dirtiest generators. That's the most pollution. So how many of you at peak times cut consumption? And they gave me a $4.60 credit on my power bill, and I've only had one over $100 this year, and I probably have a typically sized house, and there's two adults living in the house. So just some things to think about. One other thing, well, I'm going to go to what I, my other thing was, my other issue or what I was going to spend most time about, is a miracle happened in Normal recently. Did any of you notice the miracle? All the lights on land, overhead streetlights that the town pays for that didn't work for over 10 years, seven or eight of them, they all worked. I made about two calls to Ameren. They all worked. It took three or four months. I never followed up, bugged them or anything, and I got it. But at the last meeting, the city manager said Ameren's too busy to repair streetlights because we got 30,000 of them. Not so. Also, the streetlights that were cut by a cable company on, that was Landmark, on Towanda going over the tracks, which Ameren shouldn't have had to pay for, one Saturday or so, I saw people from the cable company or the high-speed internet company's contractor, they're working, digging around the poles, but they never got it fixed. And as I said, either Illinois Power or they can hire Asplund. Well, Asplund, I drove by last Saturday, I think, and there were three trucks there. Another miracle. All three streetlights worked. Thank you very much.
Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there concerns or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few comments for the evening. One, just wanted to thank the students who attended the meeting greet this evening. It was a great opportunity to meet several of you and have lots of conversation, and to those of you who decided to stay and stay the whole meeting, hats off to you, because it's not easy to sit through on a Monday night. So thank you very much. Also want to say congratulations to the Children's Discovery Museum and Playa. They hit their fundraising goal, and we got to see the new climber light up in beautiful colors in celebration of them hitting their goal. So congratulations to you on that. And then to the Fell Park event, we want to thank all the staff that was out yesterday in the rain and cold. I got to see a few of you, and it was great to see you celebrate the 125th year anniversary of Fell Park. So hats off to all of you and all the hard work that you do to make our community great and a place to live, work, and play.
Mr. McCarthy?
I won't be completely redundant, so I'll just say, great to meet all of these students tonight, and for every year setting up this event, civic engagement and town staff, for the opportunity for us to interact. And we hope, and I'll say we, that this isn't the last, first and last time that we'll see you, and hopefully we'll see you again at other town and gown events or council meetings, or anytime that there's topics on your mind or local government, we're always here. Thanks. So moved.
Second. Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye.